Call a meeting to order. Invitation by Mr. Reddick Schwest, District 10. Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Al Archer.
Dear all, we thank you all for today. In fact, we thank you for every day. Bless and keep your hands upon our teachers, students, as we should for all in the world, not just the LaFouche Parish School District. Keep your vision with us, Lord, and your spirit with us as we go into the meetings tonight. Keep it blessed as we think of you as when we make our decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Ms. Batten.
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Ms. Fatida.
Here.
Dr. Broke. Dr. Ghiat.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Dupren.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Plazos.
Here.
Mr. DuBless. Mr. Justclair. Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Dupren.
Here.
E, new business to conduct a public hearing to view the 2020 operating budget. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion by Ms. Tyler Dupren, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. Go ahead and open the public meeting. Vote. Let's vote. Thank you, Ms. Fatida. Motion passed unanimously. Open the floor. Mr. Goode.
Nobody. At this point, it's purely for the public. So if anybody's interested in having a comment about the budget, positive or negative, time to step up now.
Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public regarding the 2020 budget? Any comments from the board? Ms. Fatida.
Thank you. I just want to thank Don and his staff for compiling this budget. As you can see, it's very, very intricate work, and we just appreciate all of their hard work. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fatida. Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Cheryl, for coming in. Appreciate it. Ms. Boujwa.
I just want to say that Don says, presented it to us, that there's a slight increase in tax revenue. So I want to thank the public for shopping locally. I hope they continue, which definitely helps our budget. So let's keep that campaign going, shop locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. What a statement. That's good. Anybody else? If not, we'll go to B. Adopted budget resolution contained in the budget statement approving the 2020 operating budget. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion amongst the public? Thank you for joining, Ms. Siddeplanis. If not, we'll vote. Ms. Siddeplanis, you want to hand the vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good. Motion passed unanimously. Four. Is there any further comments from the public? Any further comments from the board? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. We call a meeting to order. Invitation by Ms. Barry Plazos, District 10, and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Al Archer.
Dear Lord, thank you for giving us your grace as we have to guard this school year. We pray for all those people involved in the school system, maintenance people, bus drivers, cooks, secretaries, principals, teachers, supervisors, or superintendent of students. For our superintendent, we encourage to recommend and promote all programs which will benefit our children. May those who teach our youth the instruments of peace and may we fill our students with wisdom. May the business of this meeting be a cause for communion amongst the goddess who serve through this meeting so that our prejudgments and our personal histories do not hinder the purpose of this meeting or the coming of your kingdom. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Ms. Batten.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Fatida.
Here.
Dr. Broke. Dr. Ghiat.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dupren.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Plazos.
Here.
Mr. DuBless.
Here.
Mr. Justclair. Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Troy Dupren.
Here.
E, to receive a report from Ms. Christine Russell, LaFouche Parish District Attorney. Welcome, Ms. Russell.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you all so much for allowing me to be here, and I'll be very brief. And I appreciate you guys letting me come each and every year just to tell you about our school program that we're very excited about this year. Last year, if you recall, we came to you about one of our newest programs that we started. Let me just also say what's coming out, that we've already been in action. David Valonson, who's in charge of our school programs, we met with Mr. Martin. He was very kind enough to allow us to go in and show him his presentation and talk to him about all the programs that we would like to do this year in our schools. We also had some of our personnel meet with Mr. Phil and Mr. Pasqua about attendance and our truancy court. So we have been in action already this school year, making sure that our partnership with you guys are ready to go. And so we already have a few classes already scheduled with some of our schools, and we're very excited to get started as well. Wendy, I'm only warming it up for you.
How does it work wonders when it works?
When it works.
I'll have to restart.
So I can talk about it. I can do it.
You got to restart.
I can't. I don't even need it. I promise. If you pull it up, I'll do it. What we spoke about last year, we started a new program called Respect Union. And what we believe in our office, and it applies to our children, it applies to us as well. If we can teach people to respect themselves, if we can teach our children to respect themselves, in turn, they're going to respect authority, respect others, and we're going to see a change in our community. So with Respect Union, with our program, what we want to do is bring it back into our schools each and every year with a different theme under Respect Union. And so this year, what we're trying to do is the theme is going to be the power of words. So last year, we introduced Respect Union to our students. Now we're coming back with Respect, and we're going to talk about the power of words, whether it be bullying, whether it be choices made in a classroom. And we're going to kind of implement that power of words in every program that we have. I want to go through the programs that, some of them are tried and true. We've been doing them each and every year, and some of them are brand new. Of course, we have Respect Union once again. We have Project Lead. We have our Peptalk program, which I'm going to get to in a second. We have our Domino program, which you guys know about as well. I'll touch on that real quick. We have cyber safety. Cyber safety is kind of in partnership with the Children's Advocacy Center of LaFouche. We go into all of the schools and churches, and we go at night in parent presentations, and we talk about how to protect our children online and how our children can protect themselves. I think Ms. Fatida was there the other day for the chamber, and it really is to give the power to our parents and the power of our children about how to maneuver online and still be safe. We have added this year the wobble goggles. We have bought some goggles that show driving pair at different levels. And so we're going to introduce those to some of our schools. We have a partnership now with Nichols, and we're going to bring that over to our college students and show them with our goggles on. And we're hoping to expand that program as well. One of the things that we're going to do, we're going to break it down and get a lot more organized this year. Class time is so important, so we want to make sure that we don't interrupt class time. So we're going to start with our fourth graders, and we're going to go in one time a year, and we're going to talk about respect. We're going to talk about this power of words, and we're going to introduce that to them. We're then going to go into our sixth graders, where we do our Project Lead, which is about making good decisions. And again, we're going to go in twice a year. We're going to go in the fall, and we're going to introduce these topics. And then in the spring, we're going to do that mock trial and show them what can happen if we make poor decisions. We have our Peptalk program. We've been doing our Peptalk program in one of our schools for a couple of years, and it's about personal empowerment. And so what we want to do this year, in our eighth grades for boys, and then we're going to separate them from the girls. And we'll do two visits, two visits per year. And what we're going to do is one in the fall, one in the spring. With our boys, we're going to talk about conflict resolution. And with our girls, we're going to talk about self-esteem. The school that we've been going into, the powerful message that we're giving, when women are coming into these girl groups once a month and telling their story at the end of the year, it's just amazing what these girls are telling us that they're learning about for women who share their story. And we want to do that again. Domino Effect, of course, each and every year would go into our four high schools right before prom, right before the end of school, and we talk about drinking and driving. And that program is amazing. And it's grown, and we've kind of expanded a little bit too. And we're going to go back into our schools this year. We really want to continue that strong partnership, and we want to hear from the schools. If there's something that we can do that I've not talked about, we're willing to do it, and we want to have a presence. We don't want to be known as the agency that just puts people in jail. We're there to help too. And we truly believe that the only way that we're going to make change in our community is if we have the partnership with all of you, and we get into the schools, and we try to make a change with them. And if we do that, five, 10 years later, I think we'll see a better community. And the last line. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Again, respect is a movement, and start with you, and that's how we end it always. We do have our signs. Most of your schools already have that signed up. But we have more. We have stickers this year. We have pins. So we're very, very excited about it. So again, we thank you. We appreciate the partnership, and we're ready to get back into the schools again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and thank you, Mr. Melisong. Is that right?
That's it.
And receive a report from Ms. Wendy Tibido, LaFouche Parish Assessor. Welcome, Ms. Tibido.
Thank you all for having me. And I'm going to take a little bit longer than Christine, because there's much more work than her. And I don't know how to work PowerPoint, so guess what? I'm not even trying. That's why I bring Rochelle along with you. My name is Wendy Tibido. I'm a LaFouche Parish Assessor. I often refer to myself as the parish bean counter. As the parish bean counter, one of my responsibilities is to count the beans, to see if we're going up in beans or down in beans. Well, in... I get in trouble if I look. Okay. In the last couple of years, as you can see up here, between the years 2016 and 2017, our ADALORM only, ADALORM property tax base, dropped 9.76%. That equates to $12 million less in revenue. Some of the district's losses that hit this... The school board lost $4.5 million. The sheriff's office lost $1 million. The Sub- LaFouche District lost $1 million. The fire district three, which protects everything south of the intercoastal, lost $821,000. Our court lost 661. The parish council lost $1.3 million. This is just some of the loss. This is just the larger ones. Almost our entire parish took a hit from '16 to '17. So this, I went and, you know, I always do my research, and I'm like, okay, what was this attributed to? Well, of course, it was attributed to the downturn in the oil and gas and watercraft industries. So the first thing I did was like, okay, what are we looking for? What's coming down the pipeline? One of the first places that I looked is the industrial tax exemption program. That's big projects that usually brings in revenue, so forth. When I looked at LaFouche Parish, we had 80 contracts with a projected investment of $580 million. So, okay, but where does that put us in respect to everybody else? I looked at St. Charles Parish. They had 130 contracts with a projected investment of $7.4 billion. That's $6.8 billion difference, and that's right next door. So I'm like, I'm going to back up and tell you a little bit about ITAP. I know a lot of my board members are already familiar with this, but for everybody else that's listening, the ITAP was always controlled. It was a, I refer to it as a 10-year exemption. What happens is that if an industry or business comes into, say, LaFouche Parish, they want to make their home here, they would apply to the LED, Louisiana Economic Development, at the state level. They would apply there. It was pretty much rubber stamped, and they would get approved for 10 years of an exemption. That means not paying a penny of property taxes for 10 years. I got a piece of paper in the mail, and it said, "You cannot put this project on until year 11." What that did is when I put that project on in the year 11, it was already depreciated 10 years. So we missed out on the highest and best use of that project. So a lot of school boards around the state, we don't have that, obviously, we don't have that much ITAP. But in the larger parishes, a lot of the school boards were complaining and so forth that they were missing out on this funding. So in response to that, the governor did three executive orders, which we're all familiar with those executive orders. I'm not going to go through all three of them, but I'm going to go to the one that is in place right now. The executive order, the last one, is that applications filed after July 1st of 2018 receive five years of exemption at 80%. And the local bodies, meaning the sheriff, the school board, and the parish council, and if that project was located in a municipality, that council, they either vote yes or vote no. There's no adjustments to it. It's just an up or down. So with a five-year option to renew. So I am proud to say that here in LaFouche Parish, we got ahead of it. We were proactive. And in conjunction with the sheriff, the parish council, and the school board, we have agreed on a procedure that will simplify this process for industry, business and industry, but also for our local government that decide the yes or the no. I purchased my office, purchased and I checked with my attorney and my auditor. I was able to purchase a program, a computer program. It's called Applied Economics, and it is customized for LaFouche Parish. I know I got up here and spoke to y'all before, but I'm just going to kind of tap on it a little bit for those who weren't here. What it is, is basically information, data in, data out. All the information that they apply, the industry applies, add to LED that's given to me. I input it into this customized program that has our tax base throughout the parish, sales tax, ADALORM tax, how much a local bread costs, how much gas, a tank of gas costs. All of that is inputted into this computer program. And when I input the data, the application information, a report gets spit out. And it's either net positive, net neutral, or net negative for the economy. It takes out the emotion. It doesn't matter whether we're losing money or gaining money. That year, it's data in, data out. It's either a positive, a neutral, or negative. If it's positive, the school board, the sheriff's office, and the parish council have given me the authority to approve those contracts. What that does is that it gives the security and the predictability to business and industry. They know that if that report comes out positive, that they can move forward with their project. It simplifies, streamlines that process. They don't have to go, it's like one-stop shopping. When you go to Walmart, you like to get everything. Or you go to this store, you like to get everything. Same thing with business and industry. They like stability, and they like predictability. And we were one of the first ones to do this in the state. In response to this, it has gotten a lot of positive, positive, positive attention from LaFouche Parish, which I am extremely proud to say that we are a part of. Because I have been contacted by LIDEA, that's the Louisiana Industrial Economic Development. I've been contacted by senators in other districts that want to come and meet with me and possibly model the state after what we're doing here. So even if none of that pans out, y'all, we have gotten a very huge positive checkmark from this. And I can't thank you all enough because without the school board, without the sheriff, and without the parish council, I couldn't be standing here saying that. And I am super, super proud to be part of that. And everybody should, you know, give a round of applause, pat you on the back, because I can't thank you enough to be part of this. Approving this ITAP, these ITAP contracts, it generates jobs, increases spending on consumables, housing, and promotes local business. Because when we approve these contracts with the new executive order from the governor, we are able to collect on that 20%. See, it was 100% before. Now, we'll be able to collect on that 20% in year one, when the market value is at its highest with no depreciation. So for instance, that fire district that lost $821,000, if a big project, a big plant paid in, before, they weren't getting a penny from ADALORM taxes. But they were still required by federal government to protect them, buy the equipment, house the firefighters, buy the engines, put the fire hydrants in. But without money, now, with the way this is, they'll be able, I'll be able to put it on the tax roll year one, collect that 20%, and the fire districts will at least have money to buy what they need to protect our residents. So this is a really, really good thing. And this is the ITAP. I was supposed to hold on. Y'all, okay. The second part of my presentation is economic development. My friend Ben Forey, who owns the business here in Tibido, we were sitting at a function, and we were talking about the economy and, you know, just how it was dropping and so forth. And he was like, Wendy, you know, I got this. I saw this thing on 16 Minutes. I'm going to send you this link and watch it. I'm like, okay, Ben. So I sent it, and he sent it to me, and I watched it. And it was about this guy called Joe Max Higgins, and he's an economic development guru from Arkansas. And I watched the link, and everybody knows that Rochelle is part of my village, so I hurry up and I text her. And I'm like, Rochelle, I got to meet this guy. I got to meet him. I got to meet him. And she, you know, a few minutes goes by, and she texts me back. She goes, "Is this personal or business?" And I'm like, "Business!" Exclamation points and so forth. So I said, "I am not taking no for an answer. You've got to get me a meeting with this guy." I was just super impressed with everything that he did. In, just a little background on Joe Max Higgins, he was from Arkansas, and in the Golden Triangle. This is Columbus, West Point, and Starkville, Mississippi. Anybody that went to Starkville, Mississippi, there is nothing, nothing there. Like, I call that UFO territory, because that's the only thing that moves there. Well, they had a satellite plant there years ago, and it shut down overnight, 2,000 people unemployed. The three chambers of those three counties got Joe Max Higgins, lured him into the tri-county area, and hired him to revitalize their economy. And what this man did was actually bring international facilities in there. They have PACSAR engines. They have Yokoh... I said it wrong. Yokomoto tires. And they have like three other huge facilities. And he worked in conjunction with Mississippi State and the local community college there to take those same people that were unemployed, and they just retrained them to do what these companies needed. So when I saw that on 16 Minutes, I told Rochelle. I said, "If you need to get me a meeting," and of course, you know, she doesn't want to come and tell me no. So she's like, "I got you a three and a half hour meeting." So off to Starkville, Mississippi. I went and met Joe Max Higgins. And what I learned about economic development has absolutely changed my outlook. And what I learned is that economic development is a sales job. It's a sales job. I am not a good salesperson. I am not your guy for this. I never wanted to be. I just, I'm trying to look to revitalize our economy. And I didn't realize this at the time, but we don't have an economic development director for the parish. So I have reached out to all the candidates and begged them to promise me that whoever gets in office that they will hire, that will be on their priority list, to hire an economic development director. Joe Max Higgins sat down with me, funny, funny guy. He's all over the place. Y'all think I'm all over the place? He is all over the place. He looked at LaFouche Parish. He pulled it up on his computer, and he said, "I'm going to tell you. The first thing that's a problem is your tax code." He said, "Y'all are taxing yourselves out of business." He goes, "Y'all got to get a handle on that." He said, "The second thing is that, you know, you need to market yourself better." He goes, "It was so hard to find this information about y'all." He said, "On the world wide web, I couldn't find y'all." And so he told me some of the things that we can do. And one of them is project completeness. This is just a packet. This is about his area. And it's on the internet, and it's just simple information, like how many people live here, what's our school system, how many schools we have, how many libraries we have, what kind of land we have, some simple, simple, simple stuff. So I've been taking the initiative to call in different places, different organizations, just to get some information. And I spoke to Vic LaFawn, who was in charge of our region. And he said, "Yeah, I can get the information. I'll put it up on the website." So that was awesome. The other thing he talked about was work keys. Now, y'all will be familiar with this because y'all are school. And ACT, you go over to high school and you take your ACT test. Same people put this on. And what work keys is, is that they go and they test laborers. They go through, and they'll go to Fletcher and Nichols, and they'll test laborers. And they'll classify them and like rate them, platinum, gold, bronze, silver. And if industry wants to come in, like a plant on the river in St. John Parish, and they're looking for laborers, they'll go to LaFouche Parish and say, "Okay, we'll pull up work keys. We'll get work key certified." And LaFouche Parish has 1,000 bronze-level laborers. Well, they only need 200, so this is the place they will go. Some good news about work keys is that South Central Planning, Ms. Martha approached me this last week. I'm super excited about this. Y'all are the first ones to hear about it. She approached me, and I'll get the right information, so I won't misquote anybody. The Delta Regional Authority has a grant that she has applied for, for the region. Work Keys puts on a boot camp in Atlanta, and, you know, you got to get like six people on this to represent your work keys to get certified. St. James Parish got certified in 2019. And part of this grant that she applied for, it will get us all work key certified. LaFouche, terrible. St. Charles, assumption. And what they'll do is they'll come to Nichols, and she already got in touch with Nichols, and they'll have the boot camp here in Tibido. But do you see, it's bringing people from all around this country But do you see, it's bringing people from all around this country into LaFouche Parish to market ourselves. So I'm super excited. The school board, y'all have given a letter of support to Ms. Martha's efforts. The parish government, St. James, I did, I did a letter of support, St. Mary's government, like several different ones, so that we can all get the grant. We're just waiting. She just turned in the application. So say a prayer and keep your fingers crossed that we get the funding for this. Because at Fletcher, they have energy pays for work keys testing for lyme. And they already have it in place. And I spoke with Dr. Strickland and Chandler, and they're all on board. We just need to get the funding. So whatever we can do to help them, I'd appreciate everybody's support. Prayers, especially prayers. The last thing I want to talk about, and this is the most exciting thing. I say the best for last. This is the Council of Government. I was approached by Justice Weimer, and he was like, "You know, Wendy, in St. Mary Parish, they have this thing called the Council of Government, and it's where all of the elected officials meet quarterly to discuss certain things about the parish." And he goes, "I really think you need to go over there. That could be useful here in LaFouche." Well, I don't know about y'all, but my mama didn't raise a fool. I wasn't telling the chief justice, the Supreme Court justices, no. I think the courts, Diana, I'll give anything to do. I'll be more than happy to go do that. So for the last two years, I have been attending St. Mary's Parish Council of Government. And it is really exciting. It's been in place in St. Mary Parish since 1973. And I have every intention on implementing it in LaFouche Parish. I think it'll be beneficial here. The memberships would be the superintendent and school board members, parish president and council members, the three municipality mayors and their council members, and the greater LaFouche Port Commission president and the port commissioners, because that is our economic engine in LaFouche Parish. All elected officials would attend. And the purpose of this organization would be to discuss common issues affecting the parish. Incentives for the parish, legislative issues. It is crazy to me that the northern part of the parish doesn't know what the southern part of the parish is doing. The 308 side does not know what the LA-1 side is doing. I go up to the Capitol every year. The time of the session's in there, I feel like I live up there. And I would go up there and see Duane Bourgeois from the north of LaFouche, I'll see Che from the port. I'll see all of these different people from LaFouche Parish. I'm like, "Oh, Duane, what you do, oh Wendy, what you do?" "I'm here for Warcraft. I'm here for the levees." It is insane to me that we don't work together. That we don't communicate. That we don't send a text message to each other or an email and say, "Hey, I got this. Do you need help with that?" So I always believe in leadership by example. So this year, I had my lobbyists, and I'm not saying anybody get rid of your lobbyists, because we need them all. But my lobbyists, they were, they didn't have a lot of Warcraft issues. We had finished ours before the end of the session. So I sent my lobbyists, "I gotta pay." Whether we have 50 bills or we have no bills. I gotta pay my lobbyists. I said, "Go over to Henri Boulet and see what you can do to help the elevated roadway." And you know what? Mine got certain ones, because they work well and they have friendships and work in relationships with certain legislators, and they were working, and we got it passed. That's what we should do. Because when we work together, we are something to contend with here in LaFouche Parish. But when we stay divided, that's when we get conquered. And I don't know if y'all noticed, but everybody around us is growing. Everybody. Terrabone is getting money, St. John, St. James, they just got awarded billions of dollars of contracts for river work. St. Charles, growing. There is no reason, we have some of the smartest people I've ever met here in LaFouche Parish. There's no reason we are stagnant and we're not growing like everybody else. But we need to communicate. We need to work together. And that's why I want, that's why I am so passionate about this council of government. Because it also sits down, we all come to the table, we brainstorm, and we have economic development for the parish. Networking, just communicating. If there is an ITAP facility going in the temple by the port, Troy needs to know about it, because there's three hundred families coming in. It's his district. I mean, it, it, it just, we need to do simple, simple things. So if we meet quarterly, this is one way that we can all sit down and just talk. Talk about our concerns, answer our questions before we get out of public. And what it'll show to everybody out there, business and industry, and our residents, is that we are giving them the representation that they deserve. They deserve that. You know, and we, we, and look, I faulted. I've been up in Baton Rouge. I haven't called anybody. Warcraft, okay, Wendy's up there. I need to be diligent, just like we all do. And I, I just have a very good feeling that if we all put our best foot forward and we have to compromise, that we will succeed. So I believe that these are just some of the ways we can revitalize the economy, even if we have to fake it until we make it. So right now, I don't know if this is gonna work, because some of the, some of the programs work or not. What this next thing, this next slide is, it is a part of a video. I don't know if y'all have ever saw the movie Funny Farm with Chevy Chase. He buys a piece of property in Vermont, and he thinks it's wonderful. He goes up there to write books. But when he gets there, everybody's crazy. Everybody's crazy. "Male man don't put the mail in the box," that people are mean, all this list of stuff. So he wants to sell his property. And what he does is he pays all of the townsmen, all of the townspeople, to fake it. And I don't know if it's gonna work, but he pays them all to fake it while he's trying to sell his property to this couple right here to buy the property. I am not paying everybody, because that is highly unethical and I'm broke. But I don't care if we have industry coming down here and they want to locate here. Granted, we're child efficient folk. Go stand at the body and act like we all happy. I am dead serious about growing LaFouche Parish. We all need to come, what I've been doing this whole time is, it's not working. What I've been doing this whole time is I have been building a table. And what this table is, is we all need to come to it. I missed another person. She didn't come. But we all need to come to the table, whatever is no head, and everybody can gain to show our love for LaFouche. Now, everybody's got a bean. It's okay. Everybody got a bean? All right, well, I'm not proud. I'll steal it from a saint. Everybody knows that this is the St. Joseph bean. And it's believed that if you put it in your wallet, you'll get money, right? So I stole it from St. Joseph, and I'm gonna put this bean in our wallets, and it says, "Love for LaFouche." So every time you see it, you are reminded to promote LaFouche and show your love for LaFouche, and let everybody know that we are open for business and that we are all moving in the right step. That's it. Does anybody have any question? We have a sample of the, we have, we processed in the first two ITAP, the applied economics. If y'all want a copy of it, just email me and we'll send you a sample of it. It's really, really cool. Like, it's better than what I thought. It breaks down everything. Like, you can see how they even project how much of work or a construction worker will spend, you know, eating at restaurants for a length of time. It's really, really cool. So thank you all again for doing this.
Two, approval of board consent agenda. Eight, approval of board consent agenda items. B, meeting of regular board meeting held Wednesday, August 7, 2019. C, minutes of finance committee meeting held Wednesday, August 14, 2019. D, minutes of transportation committee meeting held Wednesday, August 28, 2019. E, minutes of land and facilities management committee meeting held Wednesday, August 28, 2019. And F, minutes of insurance committee meeting held Wednesday, August 28, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tyler Duprin, taken by Mr. Randy Schwes. Is there any discussion? Any public participation?
I hate following Wendy and Christine because I'm no public speaker.
If you could just state your name and address.
My name is Donovan Bourgeois. I reside in Eastland at 196 Texas Street. For those of you who don't realize it, I'm the husband of Alie Bourgeois.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Morton, and the rest of your board members for allowing me to speak tonight. I tend, most of the committee meetings, at least I try, and I try to meet most, make most of the board meetings. And I always leave one particular committee meeting just in despair. Just shaking my head and thinking, "We have a problem here and we're not solving this problem." That's the transportation committee. This meeting seems to always be filled with such anger of a committee member. And even to the point where it seems like there's some hatred in the committee. So I thought, maybe if I would come up here and give you my opinion of what I thought about some of these issues, it may enlighten some of you to think before you act or speak, and it would help to improve the image of this board. After Mr. Billy's, my first item is after Mr. Billy's presentation, Ms. Tina Badley brought up one bus. This is a handicap bus that had corrosion around the wheelchair, strap, chain, planks, whatever that is, and other issues, bleached curtsies and other stuff. The driver of that bus did not allow her students to get on that bus the first day of school. She was giving them alternate buses. Some of you were relentless in crucifying this bus. I watched the meeting today. The meeting, the discussion on this one bus went on to where I quit watching it at 22 minutes. 22 minutes, talking about one bus. Guys, this is one bus. One bus out of 120 bus buses. There may have been other buses with these cosmetic damages or cosmetic issues, but they weren't addressed. Is this acceptable? Absolutely not. Do we live in utopia? We all know, we do not. We do not live in an ideal world. Things will happen, issues and items will go unnoticed. We're all human, and things will be missed. As a board, y'all are always bringing up these checklists. Let's add to the checklist. Let's change the checklist. Let's add a second checklist. Four, third, fifth, sixth. Pretty soon, we have so many checklists, these drivers won't know what to do. And all the checklists in the world cannot cover every and any and all current, future, and current potential issues. This is one bus out of 120 plus. I think it's 127. That's a pretty good ratio, 1 to 120. That's less than 1% of a problem in our buses. Point eight to be exact. This is pretty remarkable, and maybe Mr. Billy should be commended for his great taking care of our cosmetic issues of our buses. Now, when it goes to the breakdowns, this is totally a different area and it's totally unacceptable. However, the blame cannot be put simply all on Mr. Billy. The first contract that was signed with Mr. Billy was in 2001, and there was a clause in that contract that said, "No buses over five years old could be placed in service." And because of this, there were very few breakdowns. I know, because I would have heard about them. Being married to a principal, she brought home all those frustrations. A lot of frustrations when buses didn't run. But I don't remember ever any frustrations on breakdowns. Not unless we're 2018, when we asked Mr. Billy to renegotiate his contract. That statement about the five years was changed and revised to say he could put other, could put buses over five years old in service. And other issues about 10, replace 10% of the buses every year. I'm not an attorney, so I didn't quite understand the whole contract. We are running 10 to 15-year-old buses. Now, we know that age has a lot to do with maintenance on everything. My eight-year-old Tundra, it means a lot more maintenance than my wife's two-year-old Suburban. My 23-year-old house, I'm having to dump all kind of money into it. I didn't do it in five years. This 50-sylling-year-old body has been through hell and back. And I'm having to pay much more attention than when I was 27. Maybe I should have paid attention. So age has a lot to do with the breakdowns. We all know where the solution is here, but unfortunately, money is the solution, and the school board doesn't have an access to this. A couple of years ago, Mr. Billy was a hero because he cut 32 buses out of our buses and saved the board $470,000. $470,000, the school board is dropping them, but which Mr. Billy thought was a big hit. And he agreed to take that big hit.
Mr. Bourgeois, you're out of time. Do I, can I make, have a motion to let it continue? Very good. Thank you, Mr. DePlantis. Seconded by Mr. Troy Duprin. So motion to continue by Mr. Joey DePlantis, and seconded by Mr. Troy Duprin. Continue please.
And now, after he was a hero, now y'all want to go ahead and blunt the bus. Well, maybe we all need to be under the belt of us with Mr. Billy, because we, he's only following his current contract and directives from the current administration. And this leads me to my opinion of what can, I only want to see the boards to improve their image. The public humiliation, the public embarrassment, the public belittling toward Mr. Billy by certain members of this committee. This is the stop. This accomplishes nothing. Nothing positive will come out of this treatment. What it could possibly do is hurt us in the future when it comes to negotiating preferred treatment towards the school board with Mr. Billy's new contracts. Mr. Billy may not be willing to help out the board next time, because he has a sour he just sour taste in his mouth for the boards. When all of you were elected to your public position, your standards were set higher than when before you were elected. I wouldn't want any board member representing my district to act in such a fashion in public. And this is a public meeting that we belittle Mr. Billy. Y'all are looked at as a whole board, more than individuals. So it's disappointing when the rest of the board member doesn't call down other board members that are doing this to our, somehow, Mr. Billy. I'll figure in a little secret, or at least I think it's a secret. In my opinion, from various discussions, talking to family, friends, or just any discussion, we all like a public educator and a school board member. Naturally, here we go, the subject turns into education, school board, schools, teachers, principals, whatever. The public today has no better opinion about this board than they did of the last board. So if you want to improve this image of this school board, you have to set your standards even higher now and act appropriately in these public settings.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. We appreciate your opinion. We had a motion in the second for approval of board consent agenda items. Do we have any board comments? Any other public comments? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Three, approval of transportation committee recommendations as meeting held Wednesday, August 28, 2019. Ms. Cheryl Thomas?
A, to approve an additional bus in a value blue area at a cost of $800 a month or $9,600 per year.
Motion by Ms. Cheryl Thomas, seconded by Mr. Tyler Duprin. Is there any discussion from the board? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. B?
B, to approve the hiring of a bus operator relating to the additional bus.
Motion by Ms. Cheryl Thomas, seconded by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. B, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, August 28, 2019. A, to accept the change, to accept a credit change order in the amount of $18,829 to change 22-gauge stainless steel, pre-manufactured edge metal and expansion joints to 24-gauge stainless steel for the re-roofing project at WS LaFleur Elementary School. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary. Motion by Ms. Mary Petita, second by Mr. Barry Plazons. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. B, to accept a credit change order which, which includes to add fifteen feet of water line to tie into the existing water line for, uh, six hundred fifty dollars, to omit RFID card readers and electrical at two doors, and add a RFID card reader and electrical at one door in a credit of three thousand one hundred twenty dollars, amid its, amid installation of four sunscreen devices for a credit of fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars, substitute a trench drain type size for a credit of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, admit a ballistic rated window in a credit of two thousand two hundred dollars, and a new building plaque for two thousand two hundred dollars, and a chain link fence between the building four and six on the new mechanical yard for three thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars, chain link fence fabric from six G eight to nine G eight for a credit of three thousand dollars, and add a cellular call-out feature to the fire alarm system for one thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars to upgrade the MCT adhesive from standard easy-on one hundred at a cost of seventeen hundred dollars, and to add a removal of a grease trap at a cost of three thousand dollars, and to credit, and to credit style allowance of sixteen thousand dollars for a total credit change order in the amount of thirty-nine thousand fifteen dollars. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any more discussion?
Could you go with that?
Feel like policy for two.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, where, where does this all go happen?
The new vibe.
The new vibe is straightening up.
It did say it in there, but.
It says on the main screen, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. DePlantis. In your area. Any other board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to accept the value, value engineering credit in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars to replace the base ply installed in cold P thirty granulated cap sheet installed in cold adhesive solvent-free to replace the coating system with a liquid membrane fleece and liquid membrane solvent-free to be replaced by P twenty base ply installed in cold adhesive solvent-free for the roofing project at WS LaFarge Elementary School. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Mary Petita. Is there any more discussion because I'm sure, um, somebody else can answer.
Be on the stand by Evan. Be on stand.
Oh, I'm sitting here, buddy.
Is there any more discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Skip Holloway for making this change.
Thank you, Petita, yeah.
I mean, that's a huge, huge credit change, so I'd like to thank him again for that, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. Any further board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. D, to accept the change order to add three additional days to the contract due to inclement weather, due to Hurricane Barry, fifteen additional days due to portions of the campus being unavailable due to school activities, and eleven additional days due to fabrication and shipping delays caused by the manufacture of the gates and turnstiles for a total of twenty-nine days additional, twenty-nine additional days for the security upgrade project at Tibbetto High School. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tyler Dupren, second by Mr. Dr. Dennis Guion. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. E, to accept the high bid in the amount of ten dollars per acre or four thousand four hundred thirty dollars annually from Blair Plazons for hunting privileges on section sixteen township sixteen S, range eighteen E in the Raceland Prairie area. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any, um, more discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. F, to authorize hiring Ritter consultant engineers for the abatement and demolition of the whole rows of her elementary school two-story building and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Mr. Ray Benard. Is there any board discussion? Yes, sir.
Evans, was, uh, any, any timeframe discussed with, uh, with Ritter for the, uh, demolition to, to take place?
Now that we have the board action on it tonight, we're gonna, uh, get the contracts through the engineer and the school board. Once we do that, we'll start design, and we're hoping to have the work proceed come the beginning of summer. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. Any further questions from the board? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. G, to accept the only responsive and responsible bid from advanced training concepts for the wastewater treatment services on a three-year service agreement at a rate of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year for a total cost of one hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Petita, second by Ms. Fa, Mr. Joey DePlantis. Couldn't tell my camera's going up, thank y'all. Um, any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Five, approval of insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Barry Plazons?
A, accept the quote forward with compensation reinsurance of eighty thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, as presented by John Dorso.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. B?
To approve the following changes to the school board's insurance requirements of contractors, vendors, and tenants. One, contractor agrees to give thirty days' rip notice to LaFuge Parish School Board if any required policy is canceled, accepting only use of facility short-term events. Contract, contractor agrees to furnish a copy of any required policy when requested by LaFuge Parish School Board. Two, under additional insured number six, adds a primary and non-contrary in relation to LPSB's own liability insurance, so move.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. C?
To renew the man of Medicare Advantage plan for twenty twenty, so move.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Six, new business. A, to consider authorizing the superintendent to request permission from the district attorney to employ special counsel, namely Ms. Kendra S. Elliott of Immigration Support Services, and adopt a resolution requesting from the Attorney General the hiring of Ms. Elliott pending the approval of the district attorney. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Ms. Mary Petita. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. B, to consider approving the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty personality evaluation program. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, second by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to authorize President Huddleston and Superintendent Morton to sign the twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire by adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution and submit a copy of the questionnaire to LaFarge CPAs and business advisors, the board, and the board's independent auditor. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Petita, second by Mr. Barry Plazons. Is there any board discussion? Any public participation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Eight, I'm assuming, seven memorial resolutions. Eight, Ms. Paula Guidry, retired secretary. Mr. Barry Plazons?
Ms. Paula Guidry was hired by LaFuge Parish School District on September fourteenth, nineteen sixty-one as a school secretary at Gallion Elementary School. Ms. Guidry retired on December first, nineteen eighty-one, having served LaFuge Parish School District for a total of twenty years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
B, Mr. Herbert Smith, retired apprentice of the maintenance department, Ms. Tina Babin.
Mr. Herbert Smith was hired by LaFuge Parish School District on June nineteenth, nineteen eighty-nine as a janitor at the school board office. On April eleventh, nineteen ninety-four, Mr. Smith was promoted to an apprentice position at the maintenance department. Mr. Smith retired on January first, twenty ten, having served the LaFuge Parish School District for a total of twenty point five years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. C, Ms. Ruby Jervis, retired teacher, Ms. Valerie Boujwa.
Ms. Ruby Jervis was hired as a teacher in August of nineteen fifty-eight at LaFuge High and Upper Elementary School. Ms. Jervis also taught at Raceland Elementary School and Valuable Elementary School before resigning on May thirty-first, nineteen sixty-two. Ms. Jervis was rehired as a teacher at Raceland High School in August of nineteen sixty-five. She resigned in May of nineteen sixty-six. Ms. Jervis returned to our district again on August twenty-second, nineteen eighty-three as a teacher at Central LaFuge Developmental Training Center. Ms. Jervis also taught at Raceland Lower Elementary School until her retirement on September first, two thousand one, having served the LaFuge Parish School District for a total of twenty-three years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. And I have to say that I did have the privilege of teaching with Ms. Jervis at Raceland Lower Elementary School. She always had her students laughing, and us too.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Z, Ms. Early Rome, retired teacher, Mr. Ray Benard.
Hi, yes, this is, uh, Early Rome was hired by LaFuge Parish School District on August twenty-first, nineteen forty-four as a teacher at Gold Letter Upper Elementary School. Was a Roman retired in August thirty-first, nineteen eighty-four, having served the LaFuge Parish School District for a total of, uh, forty years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. And although I, I didn't have, have the opportunity to meet with her, my wife did, and, uh, she had, um, uh, the privilege of, uh, being in her class, and she spoke on, you know, and, uh, I, uh, I thank her for, uh, for keeping my wife in, keeping the right trust.
Thank you, Mr. Benard. E, Ms. Helen A. Bear, retired school tea, retired school secretary, Mr. Barry Plazons?
Yeah, with me, this is, this is my next roommate. Ms. Helen Reed Bear. Helen Reed loves school. Yeah. Was hired on October seventh, nineteen seventy-nine as a school secretary at LaFuge Upper Elementary School. Ms. A. Bear retired on September twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-seven, having served the LaFuge Parish School District for a total of eight years. I move that this resolution be adopted by the general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minute book. Eight, tentative dates of our future meetings. A, board member retreat Thursday, September, September twelfth, two thousand nineteen. B, Policy and Procedure Committee, Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. C, Academics Committee Meeting, Monday, September sixteen, two thousand nineteen. D, Transportation Committee Meeting, Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. E, Land and Facilities Management Committee Meeting, Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand nineteen. F, Insurance Committee Meeting, Wednesday, September eighteen, two thousand nineteen. G, Finance Committee Meeting, Wednesday, September eighteen, two thousand nineteen. H, Advisory Committee Meeting, Monday, September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And regular board, and I, regular board meeting, Wednesday, October second, two thousand nineteen. Before we adjourn the meeting, uh, we did have a birthday this month, Mr. Troy Dupren. Troy, you want to tell them how old you are?
But this is like sixty-fifty, so I'm five today.
Uh, so saying Troy, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Troy. Happy birthday to you.
Benard, we glad to have you back. We missed you. We didn't want our long adventurous night committee meeting. I'm sure your partner, driver, missed you as well, having to drive back and forth.
I thought about you all this time.
So, uh, is there anything further from anybody, um, on the board? Yes, Mr. Dupren?
Uh, those of us who have been media, family members that worked for the LaFuge Parish School Board, we have to fill out our ex-hormon tournament, deadlines fast approaching for those who didn't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Good reminder, Ms. Petita?
It can be uploaded, so you don't even have to do anything, you're just gonna upload it onto the, uh, website, uh, the faculty website.
Thank you very much. It can be electronic.
Artifacts like I did Monday. Make sure you save it not from the hit. She would consider a meal for all of us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dupren?
I just want to say it was a true honor and privilege being able to visit some of the schools for their open houses last month. Um, it's very exciting to see what we have going on, the devotion and dedication of our teachers, our administrators. It's such a great environment and the kids are very excited about the new school year. So thank you to all of our employees who are getting our kids engaged and excited about school. We thank you and we look forward to a wonderful year.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. I see most everybody shaking their head or everybody shaking their head in agreement with that. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Acting Superintendent Morton for getting it off to a great school year. I heard you were at a lot of schools. Uh, so thank you very much, and especially to the school staff. Thank y'all very, very much. Everybody was there. Everybody was happy and, uh, definitely we got all the kids to school safe too, so thank you everybody. Mr. Plazos?
Just like to say, first off, in an open house, we were fantastic, but on a different note, uh, make sure we can keep all the people who've been affected by the hurricane, Dorian, and our prayers, Bahamas, of course, and the entire East Coast, so we keep it in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Is there anything further? If not, adjourn the meeting.